Ms. Tran, are you there?
Looks like she dropped.
Oh, she dropped.
Yeah, she dropped.
Oh, wait, no, Ms. Tran, does anybody else have any comments on the sanitation contract?
Just, you know, for our conversations today with Northridge, we'll be adding another mine item to that through that. That, I forget what the number is, it's forty-eight, thirty-five, whatever it is that we're...
We're the last two, we met with the Northridge HOA, the amount of money that they're paying for their current garbage carriers and so I don't remember off about my hand hour, you know, our garbage company will match that.
They agreed to match it.
So, so that comes out where everyone's getting at least what they're getting now or better, so that works out pretty well. Ms. Tran, from the last conversation, did we already update, you know, some of the contract from the things that we talked about in the past?
Yes, sir, and then, so what you have in front of you are the red, obviously, the red text is what they want to change or add in addition to. And so, one of the things we want to make sure we're discussing and that you are paying particular attention to is that they are not agreeable, and I appreciate this in the negotiation, I'm not saying they get what they want, but pay attention to under section five point O B because they are, they are not, at this point, willing to set a price for three years. They're asking for a CPI increase that can be capped at two percent.
But it's actual CPI?
Yes.
So, no more than two?
Right, two percent.
And that's the value of a dollar, okay? Any other changes that go with that?
Well, and just, again, we talked about it last time, I had them amend their language because they were saying that people couldn't cancel, but that was not accurate. What they're saying is, if, once you pay for a billing cycle, and for us it's a quarter, that you cannot get money back if you cancel during that billing cycle.
No prorated section on canceling?
So that, and that's under section, again, under five point O, it's section five point two, residential accounts.
Okay, and what else stands out?
And then, so, this is a, this personally stands out to me only because we've had an internal conversation about it before. So, we have, in the past, had language that said, not, even if it wasn't in the contract, our service was, hey, use garbage bags. Don't fill your can with small Walmart bags that have garbage in it. Now, that has not been popular with some people, it's been fine with, you know, I'm going to assume it's mostly fine with people because we haven't gotten tons of comments about it, but I do want to point out that in this particular contract, it says, the collection is limited to a container capacity of one hundred and fifty gallons, and all waste must be placed within bags sized a minimum of thirty gallons each. So you need to pay attention to that and decide...
And is thirty gallons a traditional kitchen garbage bag?
Yeah, yes, but what you have are people that want, that sometimes want to throw all of their trash away in like a Walmart bag or a Kroger bag. And so it would fill the ninety-five gallon container up with small little bags, which, because we do the backdoor service, it's all about what you, you know, how it takes to scoop it out, put it in the, in the truck. So, it goes from maybe, you know, five, or three, six, not theoretically, three to five thirty-gallon bags could be, you know, dozens of small bags. And I just, I think I would be remiss in not pointing it out to the council, we have had from time to time, a customer that feels like we should pick up their bags no matter what they bag it in. And y'all just need to decide what you're willing to set the service level at.
Well, I actually use the little small bags at the house, but we thought we'd have a bigger garbage can by the door. Our service has dropped into basically fifty percent of what we were getting before, not a bad deal. I think most people have a garbage bag, it's probably not too much of a limit. Fair? Anybody out there just, Jerry, are you gonna pass out if we...
Are they saying that you gotta take one big bag, put all your garbage in it, and that's...
No, 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 what they're saying is, don't take the little Walmart bag, fill that up, and then that becomes your garbage.
Sometimes that's all my garbage for the whole week.
Did you ever put it in a different garbage, when you put it in a can, or you put it in a...
I put it in the bag and tied up, and I tied it and I put it in the garbage can, and that's all they gotta get out of that one bag.
Call and complain to her.
She knows it, I said it.
That's what I'm saying, and so, again, this is, we've had a lot of conversation over the past few months about what the staff can change about the contract and what they cannot do, and any changes have to be approved on our council. So I am telling you, it's going to be a question, and this is your opportunity to answer it as a council.
Anybody got any comments?
Ma'am, there are times when I might have just a little, small, wanted bags, I'll put it on top of the lid to let them know that that's all that's in there. I have my big bag in there, and then sometimes, if I don't want them to take my big bag, I'll put a big, you know, bag in there if it's full, so that they reach in and get that out. And, and believe me, I know, I've spoken with some of the guys, fifty million little bags inside of a big can, you know, they have to do this or either pick it up and dump it. So that shortens their time to do, you know, to, to reach everybody, so...
Well, and that ultimately increases your price, you know, the longer you want to do something.
Right.
For the most part, I, I, I think the city's headed in a decent direction that significantly reduces your service or your costs for the vast majority of our residents. That's just true. We might inconvenience a few, but our people are smart, you know? I used the old garbage cans, you know, like the old days, you got the little tin can, you know? So I could easily change that, just put a regular garbage bag in that, and when I threw it out, I could still make it work, and they still do it, so lots of waste...
One thousand five hundred and fifteen households that could have garbage service, we have that many scenarios on who does what. So, but the bottom line contractually is, we have to decide, as a county view, not me, what are you willing to set the pace for? Are you allowing a hundred, a hundred little bags inside the ninety-five gallon container?
They gave us a fair...
Liners, liner, liner in the can.
But I would go with just traditional.
Yeah, but again, you say thirty-gallon bag, originally, the regular one in the kitchen, it's like ducktin' gallon, grass...
Well, so, so good point, so maybe we do a little research and say, is the standard kitchen bag with the drop...
Ducktin' gallon, it's just...
Day thirteen, well, so our minimum, so we're, we're not saying that you can use just any little bag, but we're going to at least capture the standard bag on the shelf kind of thing.
Yeah, I said...
So I can, I can certainly look at that.
Ducktin', fifteen-gallon is just plain that.
And... We can say no grocery bag allowed to be used, and that's what you limit to that.
But, but if we, if we at least identified a standard white kitchen bag, if it's thirteen gallons, fifteen gallons, whatever it is, I know you can stretch it and put a lot of stuff in it because I have to take the garbage out at my house. I know y'all are complaining, feeling bad for me, but, does that make sense? Ask of them, it seems reasonable.
One more thing I want to add. Ms. Tran?
Yeah.
Commercial services, that, um, lady, you know, to get them, for some reason, you know, sometimes they custom fall, or sometimes they miss the pickup, notice that they come back out again, they charge fifty dollars.
Well, no, if, so, if it's a legitimate miss, like you were scheduled on this day and they didn't pick you up, if you didn't call it, like, you didn't have a car parked in front of you, and, and it's a miss, they need to come back out with no charge. The trip charge is, if they can document that, say, you had a car parked in front of your dumpster, or you put a padlock on it that they didn't have access to, if they come back, if they have, if they've left the city and you have to call them back, that would be the trip charge. But they have to prove, document somehow, that it was blocked.
Yes, yeah.
A genuine miss, miss pickup, you shouldn't have to be thankful.
But, yeah, that's two different things, you know? Fifty dollars compared to thirty dollars from the common one that we have is...
I think our trip charge, what is our current trip charge?
Eighty dollars.
Thirty dollars.
Now, for front end, I think it's twenty-five dollars.
Fifty dollars.
Yeah, fifty is in the contract, we're talking about what we do with that.
Yeah, but another thing is, they, you know, sometimes they say, like, they come by, something's blocked, but have them to kind of, have some kind of documentation, take a picture of that.
Yeah, and they should also be letting us know, and they shouldn't just, you know, it shouldn't be us to find them to tell us. They should be saying, contacting us as it's happening, this, this was blocked, this is a picture of it, and, and, and so we're, we're leaving. But, you know, that, and that is a service level that I think we have not enjoyed under the current contract, and, but we, you know, we will be better at auditing, that's our commitment is, we have to be auditing thing, these things in real time, so do you, do you see it yet?
Probably eighty dollars, because that, if it's blocked, it's eighty dollars.
Okay, so the trip charge, so what Angela's saying is, the current contract says it's eighty dollars if there's somebody that...
We, we...
The current contract, the current contract do not have, do not have, do not have, do not miss the act of, the trip fee in the fee schedule.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be...
Yeah, in the act of this, I would say I would choose that for twenty-five. Again, another thing to think about that is, like, with the trip fee, think about two yard of service, if you have been serviced one time per week, and for the entire month, it's fifty dollars. So, you can't, like, for one trip, with one form of the service, is that reasonable?
Well, in fact, when you compare it to a monthly rate, it, it certainly doesn't seem reasonable. So, then, give me my guidance here, are we talking about change, asking them, negotiating it down to twenty-five dollars for a trip fee? Is that what you're, is that what we're asking?
You know, whatever it is.
I think they're trying to say, first prove it, right?
And then, you know...
You know, of course, you understand in the real-time world, the proving of it can always add, add an additional, you know? Just tell me, the council wants to ask for a twenty-five dollar trip charge?
Twenty-five or thirty dollars, whatever they couldn't, you know, they wouldn't charge, you know?
Any other questions related to the actual contract as it was, was, was laid out there?
I do.
Go ahead.
Four point five collection equipment and personnel. I see that we have in there that all vehicles and other equipment should be kept in good repair appearance and all of that, and if there's spills, we're to contact who, to say that they spilled something in the street?
I think that's Public Works is who you contact, and then from there, Public Works would give the contact, the garbage company. And either they would come back and clean it up, or we'd cut or clean it up and charge it, and that's what that says, right?
Yeah, and so, and, so there's, there's language that suggests they find it, and then there's language that suggests when we report it to them. And so, so, part of the combination that we hope to clean up by having Waste Pro do residential and commercial, and right now, as you all know, we have Advanced and Latham. And so, we have from time to time, very recently, the response is, oh, well, that wasn't us. Well, you know, I just, I can't, and I told them, I said, this, I cannot stand this he shed, she shed, because if I've got a resident who's clearly looking at the truck while it's leaking, and you say, oh, well, we'll come clean it up, but that wasn't us, you know, I wasn't there. But at some point, you know, we're, we're not going to tell the resident who's saying that they were there watching it that they, oh, must be making it up. So, that, that'll help, you know, sort of streamline the process. But, to be clear, if they or us report the leak, they have twenty-four hours to clean it up, or there's a, you know, then we start to find them.
So, I don't think that they can say it wasn't them when it's every place that they stop throughout the city. You know, if they stop at my house and then go to the corner and stop, and then turn the corner and stop, you have your trail of, of, of pathway.
Sure, but you, you, so like Pleasant Valley would be a good example. There are more houses to access on Pleasant Valley than are, than are within the city limit, so other garbage companies are going to go down that thoroughfare. So in a more compact neighborhood like, say, Children's Way, there should only be one person, one vendor on that street. Now, so, part of it is figuring out, is that right?
Right.
You know, and so, but, you know, it's, again, that's the sort of tug of war, and you just have to sort of stay the course and play the, play the tug-of-war game until it gets resolved. I mean, last time we had an issue, I just sent Public Works out, because it's like, instead of going through this, you know, dog and pony show of whose responsibility it was, just go do it, if we have time. And it's before, it's before everybody goes home, and Billy graciously went out there and cleaned it up. Of course, then the company comes and cleans it up too, so they got a double cleaning, which is super cool.
Other questions related to the amended changes?
And are we required the all of hope for, uh, also container? Do they only allow some colors, it's not like...
We, I don't think that is any...
Any color that they want?
That, I don't think it's in this current version, we did when, when Advance, when we signed up with Advance, because Latham said they were gonna buy new stuff for us. We required green, black, or gunmetal, I think, the more blending color. So, but I, I don't think that language has survived this contract, not saying we can't add it, but I don't think it's in...
Are most of our commercial containers either behind some type of partition or behind a building?
Yeah.
So who even sees them? Is that a chaos?
Well, like, my favorite example is the blotch here on Marrow Road. It doesn't go in an enclosure, it literally sits on the middle, and so, when we had somebody, I guess, Advance, or maybe Republic, put down something that was not just a natural color, and instantly I saw it as if I had seen it for the first time, even though I pass it every day. And so, I think that the unnatural colors do catch your eye, and there are certainly situations where they're going to be, especially if they use those containers for their garbage collection, and they don't have a dumpster enclosure like XPO on Mount Side Seventy-Nine.
What color is Waste Pro's, isn't it green? That, that could be just the visuals.
Yeah, so what, what we may want to do is, to, to counsel one, Tran's point is, to specify that they have to use green, black, or dark brown. I think it was dark green, black, and dark brown were the colors in the other contract, so I'll make sure to...
Other questions? Anybody? Ms. Tran, anymore?
No more questions.
Ms. Tran? All right, and what's our timeline to finish this?
Well, so, assuming they're agreeable to those two additions, then you, well, you could do it one of two ways. You can wait till the next meeting, or you can go ahead and say you approve it...
Well, as long as we've got the ability to wait till the next meeting.
Well, I mean, it's kind of enclosed, because they've still got to do all the staging and ordering new dumpsters for the commercial areas, so, I mean...
What's your preference? If you're, if you're good with it, let's, let's try to walk it through.
So, if we, if we make these two changes...
Because they still have to sign it, it's not like it's not coming back.
Then you would get to approve it, but if they don't want to negotiate these two changes, then we'll have to come back for more discussion.
I can't, that's a pretty big comparison of contract. Let's just run it and see if we can't get to the final, okay?
Maybe we don't, we don't know, because now we're asking them to reduce the charge, so...
Yeah, and of course, I would, my first negotiation is going to be, Mr. Wob, we really shouldn't have this, because this is a misstep in service. But should we, then we would like to ask for consideration to make it thirty-dollar trip charge, if the customer is responsible for why you couldn't get the garbage.
All right, let's see what that does. All right, next item is the policy discussion, we'd had some issues before whether the policy and the procedure were all mixed. It appears that there's been some edits there to create separation, and there's some edits to go with it, any issues with that? Ms. Tran, you good with it?
Give me a second.
Anybody else, this team? Tori?
I'm sorry?
The difference in the policy and the procedures on sanitation, if you're good?
I'm fine with it.
Oh, perfect, okay, Ms. Tran?
So I'm curious, the edits for the policy, as it was written by Angela prior to, where did the edits come from?
Angela asked your question.
It's a, the, the last edits were from the, from the meeting, the previous meeting that we had.
So the comments provided by council?
Uh, yes, we talked about the, making sure that the language is in there about the, the no refunds on, on the counts, for service accounts, particularly for a quarter, we're not going to give refunds. And then, of course, we would prorate anybody's bill if they were, you know, kind of started the service in the middle of the quarter, or in the middle of a period or something like that.
Starting late proration, but ending early, no proration.
Right, correct, yeah. And then also, again, to put that, to put part of the policy to make sure that the language is in there, that staff has to abide by the agreement as is, and they cannot change the agreement with the, with the contract law or, without just going to the city council, so. And then we kind of moved the, the language about the requirements for the, regarding the customers notifying us about, particularly as a commercial customer, notifying us if they, you know, they changed business of owners or something like that, and to notify this timeline, and take your responsibility for the bill, for the services that they're doing.
All right, now, the good news on the policy and the procedures, we've got time on that. If, if you have any additional edits, submit them to the city manager so that we can make any finals before the next council meeting, we'll try to get those passed. On your commercial rates discussion, you know, we had some issues where we were talking maybe some, some changes on that. What was it, the commercial roll-off containers, not the roll-off where, you know, it's a demolition-type, the regular section?
Well, do you remember Exhibit A was missing one of the schedules, and, and that was actually a catch from Councilwoman Tran, where she was like, well, basically, I don't understand, like, how does it all fit into this? It's because they had left a, a, a schedule off, and if you look at Exhibit A within the contract, it would be under the front, well, the front-end load, the two-yard, four-yard, six-yard, and eight-yard, that was actually missing from an earlier iteration of the contract, so that has been included.
Okay, and, and this one, we need to set the rates at some point, even though the contract's important, I said the rates we collected some of that paper, so we've got a little bit of time there. And we already know that item five in terms of Northridge is already the change, right?
What is the front load compactor?
So it is actually a vertical, it's like a vertical compactor, and I don't think we have any inside the city of Marrow. And so I, I think that, that is something that they do have, though, but I think when he was building this Exhibit A, he inadvertently put in the vertical compactor and left off the front-end load, so even though it's not relevant to us now, because nobody has a vertical compactor, we were just gonna leave it in in case it ever comes to pass that we do have a customer that wants a vertical compactor. I feel so weird saying these things.
Do they require special installation, they'll set up, or just a drop-off dumpster, like the regular front end?
No, what...
Or do you spend a whole dumpster?
Now, I didn't ask that specific question, but when asking Mr. Wob what, what that even was, he did not indicate that it, it's literally just the way it situates, but from here to here. But I don't, I mean, I, I don't understand how you wouldn't be, Billy, do you know, have you ever dealt with a vertical compactor or whatever?
Yeah, it's just like a box compactor, it stands up vertically, and it's just...
So you don't need special mechanisms to harness it or anything like that?
Well, it's, it has special straps that actually bundle everything together, similar to what you would do with a box compactor, where you actually open the door partially, slide in wire pieces, and then create a bundle, it's similar to that. And it's certain materials that you could put into it.
Like carbon?
You, you can't put food products in it, you could put plastic, paper, et cetera, it's just, but it places some stimulations on, or stipulation on what you could put in there. That's why people don't use those now, is because of them.
And, and these are the charges that our, our customers are paying, or those are the charges that we're adding?
Angela, Exhibit A?
Yes.
These right here are, here are the, this was similar to the two fifty-five that I was charging, but this looks like it's, this is their, their rate in the contract. Yeah, so I need to go back and...
Somewhere in there we would have...
Do a new rate for us.
Total, right?
But, yeah, I felt like, wasn't that a question that Councilwoman Tran had asked at the last meeting, that you show her the difference between what we're, what they're charging us and what we're charging the customer?
Yeah, that's what I have here, I think we have this one in there before that.
Right, yeah, so, what we're charging the customer won't be in their contract, that'll be in our fee schedule.
Right.
I agree, I, I, I see more, right, so. In other words, I, I know what we're charging, or what that we're being charged, but at some point, there was a discrepancy, something about the, the compactor roll-off, help me out, Ben, and there was some dollar value that we charged, you know, per haul, and then there was some dollar value that they were charged per metric ton, and then it, because the number went up pretty significantly.
The increasing, yeah, the increasing of the roll-off price is way higher than the front end, so if we keep the same profit margin that we still, we are doing now, what, my link, there's a group of front-end customer, open-top customer will have to bury the high increase in tax, and we want to, to, to have spread that cost along, along, amongst our customer. We don't want one group of customer have to bear the high increase in tax.
Does that make sense?
Okay, well, then, we can fully answer.
Well, basically, what we're...
Just like I wasn't clear at the last meeting, because I don't understand how you take the savings and spread it across the customer. The customer gets their service, they take for it based on...
It depends on the type he's using, so let's say he uses a traditional container, you know, like you were talking about, the one at the lodge here. You know, that's just a front-load container, eight-yard, whatever, whatever, but when you've got basically a, a box dropped off, say, Mall for an example, or something like that, then the metric tons matter, and the other types matter, and what we're saying is, out of the whole contract, the difference between what we're currently paying now, as a, as a, us the city, versus what they're gonna pay in the future, for most people, citizens got a reduction pretty high, pretty, pretty good reduction. The, the front roll-off or the, the regular containers, those guys, it's marginal, it's similar to today's price, it's gonna be there. However, there's one client group that has a remarkable percentage increase, and that's the folks that have an open-top container. Does that make sense? So on that, it's all about what we charge, so if we want to make it kind of a, a fair distribution, then maybe we charge a little bit more for the front containers and not mark the, the other guy in the back.
Okay.
Think about it, our administrative fee is what's going to be...
So, Angela, didn't you put a spreadsheet together?
So, I thought it's that, everybody in commercial group has a fair increase in the rate, no one has extremely high in the average.
So...
Yeah, I don't know if I do percentage, because percentage of a lot means something, but just, just pay attention to that.
I understand, but Angela, didn't you put a spreadsheet together that showed the difference between what we are charged and what we charge?
Right, yes.
Okay, so we know what the increase is for the type of customer, because it shows it on the spreadsheet. And do I feel like the council is saying that, looking at that information, it seems that one group of, one type of customer was disproportionately increased, where others were not?
That's correct.
Okay, now, is that a trend?
Yeah, that's true, yeah, because you, like, with the roll-off, like, for the haul rate is like one oh nine, it used to be one oh nine seventy-one that we charge, I can't remember. And then, right now, it's going up to, just the, the, what they're charging is gonna be two hundred and fifty dollars.
So then, the council would have to decide if you want to increase that even more in order to maintain our, our profit, right?
But on that particular one, if, if for that, only that particular type of client, we doubled your garbage serve, think about that, that would not be in anybody's best interest.
Right.
Right.
And then to add administrative fees on top of that, you know, then the question comes down to how can we, how can we create some balance? So first, let's, let's check to make sure that that's correct, because a hundred percent increase just sounds a little weird, right? Everything else we've got is very good, why do these people get treated, you know, poorly? Because they're paying a drop-off fee for the container, a pickup fee for the container, and a metric ton, right, all of this, so it's not like anybody's getting a deal. But let's try to figure out why, and it, it's only gonna be...
I'd say that the increasing of the haul fee is about seventy dollars per haul, just a haul only of the tonnage. And for a customer who has about ten hauls a month, that you're looking at an increase of seven hundred dollars on... that you're looking at an increasing of seven hundred dollars on our part. It's not, and we have not talked about adding our inventory on top of that.
Excellent.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, well, then we can't, we can't do the, you're going to approve it because this makes it a lot more complicated. And the information hasn't changed since the Exhibit A. So if I'm understanding it differently, or Angela's not understanding it differently, or is. So Angela, what is your response to that is, is that have we looked at it in terms of the types of businesses? And I, again, disproportionately increasing for some and not other. Why does, you know, what, what is that? And, and, and then to counsel, well, to everybody's point, I'm sure is, if you're adding an additional administrative fee, then it just got kind of crazy, the, the type of increase.
Yeah, because what I did before, I understood before was to try to keep the, the profit margins roughly the same, which was to keep the, the, the variance in rates that we were charging roughly the, the difference.
Exactly, exactly. So if one group, is, is, is one, if one group increased by a lot.
Right.
And another group or other groups increased by a little.
Yeah.
How do we, to the point, how do we share the increase? So one group isn't getting a big increase and everybody else is getting a super small increase.
Yeah, so I need to go back. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So yeah, so I need to go back. I'll go back to.
So that, that may be more complicated than you.
Okay.
I mean, what result will the council authorize you to approve the contract? What are we looking for? I don't know.
First, let's, let's check with the, the garbage candidate, make sure we're right. That would be the first one. Because it seems disproportionately high in comparison to the contract. Almost seems like there's a miss there. Then the second one would simply be obvious. One way to do it is, I don't think that's very many of our clients.
Either the big one or the small one. The big.
Well, the roll-off, tunnel container, I don't, I don't think we have many of that one. So on that case, you know, obviously you'll try to change your administrative fee. You know, get it as close to back down to whatever you can. And then see how that's going to affect the, you know, does that make sense? So, and you can verify the number fairly quick. It's either true or it's not true. I don't know the reason why. But yes, those would be things that you need to have. And we can, we can make things work from there, I think. Again, just look at it. All right, uh.
Um, Mayor, could we get an official vote, um, to approve, to have you execute any law documents related? Because we've already had a regular meeting.
So, well, what we can do is, we can, just like we've done in the past, recent past, is that we can move forward with an understanding and codify it at the next meeting. Uh, but.
It's not going to be installed until the number first.
Well, then what, what Waste Per will tell you is, we're not buying anything without a signed contract.
I understand.
Okay, so to Jasmine's point is you would need a vote in order for you to execute it. So can you take a vote in the work session?
You can, it's still a.
It's, it's an old session.
There's an old conversation about that, I'm just wondering.
An old attorney tip.
So you, you are, you think they can take a vote? That is our official.
That's correct, because we've advertised the meeting. It's on an item that's on an agenda and it's still technically a meeting.
That was the will of the council.
Let's be, um, clear with the information that has been requested, calculations and understanding of how to proceed to remedy what the goal is. And be clear that we're going to vote on it, vote on it on the next meeting.
But I'm just, again, timelines are, you may miss a couple of days of sanitation service. Because they're not going to move forward buying anything without a signed contract. And that is cutting it close. So be it, let the chips fall where they may. I just feel like I need to say that.
So we are, changes, the trip fee?
Trip fee to thirty, color scheme for the dumpsters. Um, and just resolving this.
Yeah, admin fees to have comfortability.
Well, th- those are already out.
Those are in our side, that's not on their side.
The North Ridge issue, it's in there. And then.
Coach already got them agreed to that, so that wasn't.
But it's not, it's not, the language isn't in there, it's not the same. And then trying to understand the more equitable, first of all, if it's real, if this, this heightened increase for this particular customer is.
That's what I was referring to.
Yeah, yeah. And then if, if, if it is, seeing if we can make it more equitable across all customer and eliminating the admin.
So if we vote on it, then you're saying that next week.
Is not pick up commercial garbage service. That would not look good. All right?
Well, we're, we're not going to even, we're not going to create that monster. So.
So then you would just, understanding all this is that you are going to authorize the mayor and after negotiating with the city manager and the finance director and the vendor, you're going to authorize the mayor to execute the contract?
We, we can, we can keep y'all in the loop on what's going on. I mean, there's, there's nothing political about math. I mean, it's, we, we just don't want to toast a particular segment of the population for no apparent reason. It's just checking math after that. Pretty much you need a garbage contract. You could not pick up their.
But it was made political about trash, so, I mean, we're talking about the sanitation contract, so.
There's no, okay.
So.
What's your thoughts?
I, I, I would, you know, just seeing we are all concerned about town prayer, we haven't got it done until we, you know, I'm not sure we, we get there.
Ms. Tran, what's your thoughts? Stan?
I think she's on mute.
I think she's on mute or she's not, she's not reading, or she can't hear. All right, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to take, um, as it was stated by the city manager, and you can play that for the record. Based on what was stated, we don't replay it a second time. I- is there a motion to approve? As stated by the city manager?
As stated by the city manager, so, so, so move.
All right, prepare a second.
Second?
My ladies in favor say aye. Ms. Dean?
Aye.
Ms. DeQuo?
Aye.
Ms. Knight? Ms. Tran?
I, I, I'm sorry, I was moved.
No, you're fine. Uh, motion passed, as you know, so, and we'll make sure, make sure everybody in the city council gets all the information. Let's keep on the streets, pass it.
Our third candidate is here. Does he want to do Zoom from the parking lot? Is that what you're doing?
No, 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 um, I was typing Zoom, but he hasn't joined yet, has he?
Webex.
Right, I, I sent him the Webex information. Did he join, has he joined yet?
I haven't, I don't see him yet, so.
In the worst case scenario, you can do it by cellphone. I mean, I don't necessarily have to see him.
He's not there, so.
No, okay.
So I, I do have a comment that I would like to, um, about sanitation. So while we are wrapping up, um, negotiation for a new contract, I think it would be in the city's best interest to also wrap up whatever inquiry that has been ongoing with regard to whether or not the city should pursue credits, what is the value of credits, what is the calculation? We, we need to go ahead and wrap this conversation.
Sanitation company. And at some point, the answer is absolutely.
Wrap that up.
Come up with a number.
Wrap that up. We're taking away time and resources to find what that magic number is, um, you know, it's.
I've heard that number's anywhere between twenty-one and sixty thousand. So it's really.
You know, we've got day-to-day operations taking place. Let's, let's wrap up that inquiry as well.
Do we have?
He's not due.
Okay, we'll just keep going. Uh, fire department, uh, fire marshal job description, city manager?
Yeah, so, uh, as I notified you all, our fire marshal resigned.
He's on, he's on.
All right, let's go with it.
Oh, okay, sorry, okay.
All right, Mr. Tyson, how you doing? Did you ask the city attorney for something?
Yeah, we just said that we were going to move forward with Tri-Ban. If the city attorney said that she was comfortable that we were covered, we had some discussions about what is vacant. Um, and so we, we did move forward with Tri-Ban. So they are your new, um, insurance.
Anything else that's critical that can't wait till the next week?
Retreat.
It's November seventh, the thing.
Did we, um, check this year?
So we originally selected November seventh based on the information that was provided. However, um, one of the council members didn't put the accurate information, so there are additional dates available in October, October tenth or October seventeenth, if you all would like to change.
How, how about our presenter, if you're capable of being there for that?
I mean, I've been, this just came in last night and I've been in meetings all day, so I, I don't, haven't been able to, you know, I, I would, I would rather just stay with November seventh, but I don't get to choose, y'all do, so.
Right, but didn't, um, whoever running the retreat, did they pick November seventh? Is that a date that already got set?
No, we haven't even, we haven't, we, I think she knows the date.
No.
But we haven't heard back from her on some other thing, so.
Okay, well, let's take those maybe dates, let's run it by the presenter, see what maybe works. And if we get everybody to reach on some consensus there, then let's figure out.
And I'm going to have to look and see if those dates, the new dates are, if I have any conflict. Really, just can't, I haven't had the chance to do it.
So up in here, but okay, so we're, we're still working on it, Mr..
It'll be November seventh at the latest. And remember, even if we can't do it here, we can do it, you know, at the conference center or the welcome center. So even if there's elections here, it doesn't have to be at city hall.
And, and this is, is just a, a deal. This is a really cool sign. Okay, and, and I, I would say I love it, no problem. You can't afford it, right? And, and I was hesitant about, you know, giving them this sign because this sign is basically, you know, one of the advertisements. So when we talk about a billboard, you know, you don't want to sit there and say, technically we can make fifty thousand dollars a year and then spend, you know, five hundred thousand dollars turning it into a really cool sign and spend another three thousand dollars a month on the actual utility bills. It's, it's, it's way above our schemes, right? But the concept makes sense, right? But when you look at something like this and then you come down with the reality, right? You see that nice million dollar home and then suddenly the next thing you know, you got a trailer house with wheels. That's, that hurts people's feelings when I have to take that big of a step back. But, but think mostly billboard, some sign is of some sort, okay? So in that process, um, from what, uh, city is saying, in, in the event that it costs more than a hundred thousand dollars, which we're pretty sure that it will, and our, our portion of it, that it has to get through the public works construction law, which means you're going to have to, so we can do the design interior, but then somebody's got to figure out what it's going to get paid for to get it built. And, and this is where you've just got to be a little careful. The design works, but John designs a sign you can't build or an engineer comes along and does it. So there, there are people who do design, build for a living in an engineer's world. So what we want to send the information back to the city is find us that person who does reverse engineering, so we're not designing a sign we can't afford. And then see what one looks like, give us a couple of ideas and then pitch it back. So the ideas are sound, but this is just too much. You can't afford it.
Well, I, I think, I mean, like you said, that's just the, the joy to let us have something that, to see.
I, I agree, this is cop gallery. I love the sign, but I have an idea what this would cost.
Tomorrow, we understand that.
But, but that's the only one we showed you. Then you're going to have your feelings hurt when you see the reality. Okay.
We're, we're big boys and girls.
I know, but, you know, when you see this and you see the comparable, everybody will cry. Can we wait on anything else?
Uh, just to drop, you know, we can, if, when is, when is the fire marshal's last day?
Right.
Friday? So we would be without a fire marshal. We would, we could certainly choose to use Safield in the gap. Uh, but I know, but it, we're talking a couple of weeks. Um, but otherwise we need to get this job.
You can just pick somebody that's in the fire department to be the temporary fire marshal.
Can we appoint an interim?
Follow me.
Okay, well, you're there, well, yeah, so.
I mean, I've got a couple of people that have some qualifications and all, and they would just do it on shift. Well, whatever y'all would decide, they would come off shift into the office or just do it every, every day with on shift.
Well, right now there's not a ton of.
Yeah, I mean.
We're on out there, so I don't think we should work around it.
Yeah, I think if we did it, if we, so technically it would be two or three days a week